Greetings, this is the Get to Free Press and I'm George Boston-Rice out of Valdosta, Georgia. I had an individual to call me that reside here in Atlanta, Georgia. Clark Howard, he has called local news media here in Atlanta.
I worked for the City of Atlanta Public Works Level 5 North Avenue for ten years, from 1988 to 1998.
Why did you call me here to cover this story?
I have been trying to get my pension since April the 10th, 2012.
Have you gone to the Atlanta Journal-Constitution or Clark Howard or anybody else in Atlanta? WAOK radio station, anybody to get your story told? Because there just may be other former employees for the city of Atlanta that still haven't received their money that they have rightfully earned, but it seems as if those blacks city government will not pay y'all. So you think there may be others in this same predicament?
My question is...
City Hall in Atlanta, we're headed to the mayor's office.
I came on the news report when I was a teenager. Recently, in the last month, we sent the mayor's office certified letter. No one seen it. A file, it's a file. On the application I had sent, a copy of my birth certificate. But when allegedly, I never received any money. Waited fifteen days for a response. We didn't hear a response, we called back. The lady that we talked to on the phone was the lady that received the certified letter. And she dedicated well, sent me another copy. Ma'am, in every department of the City of Atlanta, from the pension department, the law office...
So you don't have another copy?
Everybody has a copy, what's the purpose of keep sending copies?
Not saying it's impossible if we can get another copy, because we get the mayor's copy.
Listen, 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 just listen to me. Everybody down here has a copy. I waited, the commissioner was doing the budget, I waited four months to get an appointment. I went to the pension board, talked to Ray Adams, they sent me to the law office. They went, went to the law office, he sent me back down to the pension.
What do you think about any week, you believe that?
No, I don't. What does this respond?
I can't tell you what the response is gonna be.
Well, I need the paper trail where I signed the check. See, I did do this before you.
I know, I realize that.
So, so, my request, and you'll be responding. Will it show a paper trail where I signed the check? You already hear that? Yes, sir.
Okay, after doing that walk, what do you think? Do you feel any more confident? Or how do you feel about your situation now?
Well, sir, I'm, 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 I feel comfortable when they give me my money. Say why? I don't know why. All I can say is that they sticking to, yeah, they sticking to. The resources that the City of Atlanta have. If I had went to Jamaica, Russia, they have the resources to find out where the... The SEC, the Superiority Exchange Commission Office out of Washington DC allegedly said that, even she said, that was in 2013, that, that the pension director embezzled $1.2 million.
Yeah, what's your name and the phone number?
James Rutledge. Phone number 678-760-0725.
Thank you very much, great boss, but there may be some news media here, news media in Atlanta who care enough about your situation to focus in on it. I'm down in Valdosta, I don't mind putting it out there. But I believe that there should be Atlanta Journal-Constitution, somebody should address your issues. Because after all, there may be a lot of other people with the same problems, but they just gave up and called nobody to cover their story.
Well...
Greetings, this is the Get to Free Press and I'm George Boston-Rice out of Valdosta, Georgia. I had an individual to call me that reside here in Atlanta, Georgia. And as you know, across the state of Georgia, if not the United States of America, it is hard for black African-Americans to get their story told on mainstream media. I don't care whether it's Atlanta Journal-Constitution, WSB, or other television stations and radio, it is often hard for black Americans to tell their stories. I'm in Atlanta, I drove up from Valdosta last night. Because I received a call from an individual that I want you to hear. He has a story to tell. And according to what he has told me, he has been to Clark Howard, he has called local news media here in Atlanta. But I am here to let you know that three weeks ago, I called the mayor's office and talked to his secretary. And like this individual, as he will tell you, the mayor, of course, he's black, he have ignored this individual. We want to record this to let all African-Americans and other good, right people in the state of Georgia understand that just electing a black mayor or a black city county commissioner does not mean that you can get your story told. They won't even meet with you, they won't even sit down with you. Secretaries will not even follow up and give you a call back. I did this three weeks ago. The mayor nor his secretary has called me back on behalf of this individual. And I'm gonna let him tell you his story. And of course, yes, it is about the money that the city of Atlanta owed this man through his job, through his pension. He worked for the city, but he could not get his money. And so he's going to tell you about it. The only reason that I'm here in Atlanta is because, just like when I was in Jacksonville, Port St. Joe, Florida, Savannah, wherever it is, it's always the same. The news media will not report these cutting-edge issues. Now, please, listen to this young man as he gives his story. And this isn't concerning the city government, not in Afghanistan, Pakistan, Uchikistan, or any of the other states, right here where we stand, in the capital of the state of Georgia. Okay, what's your name?
My name is James Rutledge.
Mr. Rutledge, you called me to cover this story. First of all, where did you work?
I worked for the City of Atlanta Public Works Level 5 North Avenue for ten years, from 1988 to 1998.
Why did you call me here to cover this story?
I have been trying to get my pension since April the 10th, 2012. I have talked to Ray Adams, the commissioner of the pension board. I've talked to Commissioner Yancy. I've been to pension board meeting. They gave me two checks with the front side. I had for a paper trail, I had for the backside. When I applied for my pension, I had to show them a copy of my birth certificate to apply for the money. But yet, when they allegedly gave me the money, I didn't have to give them no ID. I have not received any money from the pension. And I've been waiting four years.
How much money are we talking about that the city of Atlanta owe you?
Both checks came to the amount over $9,000 in 1998. But I have requested return on my investment from 1998 to present.
Okay, so you're saying that although you was entitled to that $9,000 by now, interest or whatever should have accrued that you want to collect that too, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, three weeks ago, we called the mayor's office. And the mayor did not respond. It's three or four weeks later, the mayor has not responded, am I right?
Yes, sir.
The clerk, clerk that you talked to did not respond, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Three weeks ago, we called the mayor's office. And the mayor did not respond. It's three or four weeks later, the mayor has not responded, am I right?
Yes, sir.
The clerk, clerk that you talked to did not respond, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So apparently, they have no intentions of paying you? Do you think there may be other blacks who was employed with the city that have not received their pensions either?
My question is, the SEC, they investigated this matter, and allegedly, the pension director embezzled over $1.2 million from the pension board.
Now, how can you say they embezzled that much money? What proof do you have? Or is that a figment of your imagination or what?
I have the paperwork to back it up, from the Security Exchange Administration.
So why do you think that the current mayor, who's a black American, I believe, why would the mayor not respond to you if it's dealing with your money? You are from the low economic income areas of the city of Valdosta? Why you think they would not even respond to you or try to give you your money?
I really can't answer that, sir, I don't know why, but I have not received any money. I've tried, they tell me to be patient. I've been patient for four years, you know? You know, I would come down, first I went to the pension board. I talked to Mr. Ray Adams, and he showed me checks where I allegedly got the money. I have not received any money. I went to pension board meeting. I talked to the commissioner, Yvonne Yancy, about my money. She even agreed, that she believed me, but I haven't received any money.
Now, what you're saying, is this a figment of your imagination? Or can you give me some background information about what you actually did? Sent certified return receipts, also have pictures of the check, but nothing was shown on the check?
That's on the backside, where it went through a bank. They only showed me the front side. It should be my signature on the backside, just like it took on the application. When I received the check, they allegedly said, the freight check for $1,000, they mailed it to me. No, sir, I wouldn't have had to mail me no money. I either would have had a direct deposit and/or came by and picked it up. The $8,000 check, they say I came by and picked it up. But it's no paper trail of where I did this. I have never received any money.
And you do have some checks. And what do those checks say to the current black mayor? The current black elected mayor here in Atlanta? What does that say about the mayor, him being African-American? He have heard your story, we called him three weeks ago, and yet he ignores you. Why do you think he would do that? Seems like he should feel the pain of what blacks have to go through. How can he sit in office and not say nothing? What's your opinion on that?
I really don't know, this is the first check? No, this is just the front side.
That's the front side, okay.
I requested three years ago for the backside.
Okay.
Where it would show my signature.
Right.
And where it would show that it went through a bank.
Okay.
They can't show me this.
And you have presented this to the city of Atlanta, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So they are aware that that paperwork does not show your signature?
Yes, sir.
Then you turned around and asked them to provide a copy of the same document with your signature, right?
Yes, sir.
And they have not done that?
Four years.
And you contend the reason why they haven't shown it to you because you did not cash your check, am I right?
I have not received any money. I have not received any money.
Okay, now, I've been doing this a long time. So what they would tell you is that you need to get a lawyer. What do you say to that?
I am a senior citizen, sir, I live off fixed income. The last lawyer that I talked to wanted a $2,500 retainers fee. And I just don't have that type of money. I just don't have, I'm a senior citizen. I live off a fixed income of $844 a month. That's, that's, I don't have money to give a lawyer a $2,500 retainers fee.
Have you gone to the Atlanta Journal-Constitution or Clark Howard or anybody else in Atlanta? WAOK radio station, anybody to get your story told? Because there just may be other former employees for the city of Atlanta that still haven't received their money that they have rightfully earned, but it seems as if those blacks city government will not pay y'all. So you think there may be others in this same predicament?
My question is, allegedly, if $1.2 million was embezzled from the pension director, I think there had to be a couple people, you know what I'm saying? Had to be more than one person, had to be a bunch of people. And even if the money was stolen, the money is FDIC, it's federal issue. I didn't receive it, so it's up to them.
So, 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 other word, we're dealing with a government entity here in the city of Atlanta that dealing with somebody's money and pension fund.
Right.
And apparently, there is no accountability. So how do you think a city government, a metropolitan city, the capital of the state of Georgia, can take people's money and not even show where they paid the individual? How can they do that?
I can't answer why, but I am going to fight this. I have even made arrangement where if I get ill, my nephew, Blas Scott, I have gave him power of attorney to pursue this matter. Because, no, it's not optional. I'm asking for a handout. I'm asking for the money that we...
So you're saying you're not asking for no welfare? You're not asking for no side money that you didn't earn? You're asking for the money that you actually earned, am I right?
Yes, sir.
And yet, no newspaper in Atlanta? No television station in Atlanta? Nobody seemed to be interested in you getting this story out to the general public, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
That is why you called me in Valdosta, Georgia? Because you know that I will do what I always do, and that is to report what others ignore.
Yes, sir.
Now, do you mind if I send this to Atlanta Journal-Constitution, WSB, and all other television stations, not only in Georgia, but across the nation? Because people got to understand, even the Department of Justice don't even serve us. We looked at the Department of Justice, but we end up just looking.
Yes, sir, I would encourage you, matter of fact, I insist, that you get the media involved. The only way that I'm gonna get my money is they're gonna have to be pressure. Because I have waited four years patiently. I've been to pension board meeting, I've talked to everybody in City Hall, from Ray Adams to the commissioner, the pension director, and all of them just turned it back, you know, you know, you know, you know. I haven't got the money. They say they believe my story, but sending and helping me get my money is just like, just talk, it's just talk. And even when, three weeks ago, when I got you involved, and we sent the mayor's office a certified letter with a return, the lady on the phone asked me to send some more copies. But she was the one that signed and received the copy. So why should I have to keep sending copies and wait thirty days? When every department in the City of Atlanta, from the pension board, from the law office, from the commission office, has a copy, and the mayor office, they have copies. It's just a delay tactic to send more paperwork. But then you have to wait thirty days for them to respond. They haven't responded in four years. They haven't responded in four years. They have not responded in four years.
So is it your belief that they just bent on not paying you? Maybe because you're black, they feel like they can get away with it? But I don't believe it's about skin color. I believe city government just don't want to do what is right. If you produce the checks wherein the check were cash, but you don't have a signature on the check and they provided you with that, I can't even understand why they would even send you the check if it didn't have your signature on it. Well, you think somebody in the city government cashed the check?
I don't know who, who, who cashed the check. I don't know who cashed the check. At first, when it first started, first started doing this case, I didn't want to blame them. I didn't want to blame no one particular. But they are saying that I received money that I never received. I didn't receive it, but they telling me that they gave me the money. They did not give it. And they cannot show me a paper trail where I signed it and it went through the bank. But yet, when I applied for the money, I had to send them a birth certificate to apply. But the rules got lax on receiving money. See, like to me, I would have to show them the same paperwork, the same birth certificate, the same valid driver license to receive a check for $8,000. It's just like, I didn't have to show them no ID. And see, I got a problem with that, why? Because they know that I never received any money. They, they know that.
Mr. Rutledge, I want you to understand something from my perspective, and that is number one. I'm finding out that not only Atlanta, but many city and county governments will not respond to the citizens in the state of Georgia. They ignore us. We have to fight for everything. And so I want you to know that we have sixteen to eighteen black mayors in the state of Georgia that are fighting to stay in office because governments, certain elected officials are lying on them, taking them to the Superior Court. Some are being removed from office. And nobody at the state capitol in Georgia Legislature or General or something will even address their issues. So I don't want you to think that you're the only somebody that our elected officials are ignoring. I have documented that this is a pattern and practice that blacks in particular, I can't speak too much about whites, but they are two white mayors that are also catching hell on the backside of heaven. So now, I want you to keep fighting, and I promise you that I will do everything that I can. I told the mayor, secretary, that I will not stop. That I will publish this, I will be sending it to President Barack Obama for all good it will do. I'm gonna send it across the nation. Because if you was ripped off with the little $14,000 that they may see it, it may be little to them, but I do believe it is great to you. So you have any closing remarks you want to give, fact, if you want to give your phone number or email address where if somebody do see this out there on social media, they will contact you, because we know that mainstream media just not gonna do it.
Yes, and, and, and conclusions, I'll give my phone number, 678-760-725. No, it's not optional. No, it's not optional. I'm going to receive my money.
One other thing I want, one other thing I want to know. Now, some people ask you, why did you wait four years to start fighting this struggle? What other paperwork did you send to the city of Atlanta? And if you sent it to them, did you just send it or did you send it certified return receipt?
Well, the, the main reason why I applied for it in 2012, April, when I left the city of Atlanta in 98, I wasn't eligible based on their guidelines. And you had to be fifty-five years old. I was forty-five in 98. So once I figured out and found out the age limit in 2012, that's when I applied. Even the lawyer, when I went to the pension board speaking with Ms. Yancy, said that even if he had applied in 98, he wasn't qualified. I would have been denied. That's why I didn't even apply for it in 98. I simply got a better pension job and went to the Cab County Sheriff Department. I just changed up. I wasn't eligible to receive a pension at forty-five. The age limit is fifty-five.
So when they paid that out to somebody, you're saying that you wasn't even eligible then, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So it shouldn't have been paid out to whoever received the money?
Yes, sir.
Which may lead to, it may have been somebody in the house, the City Hall, that took the money. I mean, I know you didn't say that, I'm not, I said may.
It's a possibility.
I'm using apparently, a possibility.
It's a possibility. It's a possibility.
Do you think we can go in and maybe see if the mayor's in?
I would love that.
Let's walk in and see if the mayor's in.
We're at the City Hall in Atlanta, we're headed to the mayor's office. And he says that in four years that he been trying to get his pension. The police officer downstairs seemed very concerned and amazed that they had not paid him. And so he directed us where the mayor's office was. This is City Hall in Atlanta, Georgia.
I've been on a mission for four years giving a pension. Recently, in the last month, we sent the mayor's office certified letter. So no one seemed to respond. And this guy was impressed, and we trying to get involved. I'd like to pick someone, and the mayor's office, James Rutledge. They have all the information about my pension. Yes, June, June, it was in June.
Yeah, it was in June.
But I've been on this task for four years. They showed me the front side of the check. I worked for the City of Atlanta from 1988 to 1998. When I applied for the pension, I applied, just applied. When I applied for the pension, I applied, just applied. On the application, I had to send a copy of my birth certificate to apply. But when, uh, I allegedly, which I never received any money. Allegedly, when I received these two checks, they only showed, gave me copy of the front side. That's for the backside where I signed it and it went through the bank. So I have been in pursuit of that information for four years.
How are you?
I have not received any.
Thank you.
Zero dollars.
Yeah, you didn't see you did.
I've been to pitching board meeting. I've talked to Ray Adams in the pitching. I've talked to the commissioner Yancey. I've talked to people on the first floor of the mayor's office. So why is it that I can't get someone to give me the money that I worked? Thank you. Did they owe me to, to have, have seat?
Sure, that's fine. Let me see, can I see your paper please?
June first, wait fifteen days for response. We didn't get a response, so we called back. The lady that we talked to on the phone was the lady that received the certified letter. And she indicated, well, sir, send me another copy. Ma'am, in every department of the city of Atlanta, from the pitching department, the law office.
So you don't have another copy?
Everybody has a copy. What's the purpose of keep sending a copy?
Is it possible if we can get another copy? Because we gave the mayor a copy.
Listen, 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 just listen to me. Everybody down here has a copy.
Okay, sir, I don't have a copy.
In four years.
I don't have a copy, sir, that's why I'm, I'm asking.
But the...
You don't wanna give me one, that's offensive. That's all I'm asking.
Excuse me, ma'am, what if you just, if you, can you make a copy of?
Yes, I have no problem, sir. I don't, I have no problem making a copy, I just...
That lady, that just...
That's, um, she's the assistant for, uh, COO. I'm the scheduling assistant for Mayor Reed. So if I can get a copy, I definitely...
Well, she comes back with, ma'am, you more, more than that.
Yeah, no problem, okay.
But see, the reason that I think they just sent me through the waiting stage all over again. I've been at this for four years, four years. You know, you know, you know. I waited when the commissioner was doing the budget. I waited four months to get an appointment. You know, you know. I went to the pitching board office, talked to Ray Adams. They sent me to the law office. They went, went to the law office. He sent me back down to the pitch. It just, it just been in and out of one place or another.
Well, well, to make, to make something real short from my understanding, he called me, I'll come up and about that. But, uh, if, if, if he, he, he requests that, if he just could see, don't worry about that. If you could ju, if he could just see the back of the checks where he signed, it won't...
Then the paper trail went with the bank.
But, but he can't, his signature not even on the check they sent. I don't know why they would even send him a copy of the check.
You mean with the pension, with the pension people, right?
Well...
No, no.
The checks that he supposedly cashed, his signature not...
When I applied, just the application of applying for the money, I had to send them a copy of my birth certificate to apply for the money. They wanted to make sure that I was who I said I was. But yet, when they gave me a check of eight thousand dollars allegedly, it should be a copy of, of valid picture ID to receive the money. If it does speak on the application, why is there a lack on the receipt? They have not gave me my money.
Well, let me go check back with the mayor if she wants to.
I'm not asking for no future welfare, this is...
I think you're gonna need to, is this copy for us or do you need this back?
That's my own question.
Okay, so we'll make a copy of this and we will respond to you then, right and by the end of the week. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
What do you think about the end of the week, you believe that?
No, I don't.
You don't?
No, 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 I don't.
Why don't you believe they're gonna respond to you? This is, this is city government.
They haven't responded in four years, why, why about saying that they gonna respond in, 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 in the end of the week? Okay? And we should get back. And they'll respond. I want a paper trail of the signature, my signature, and a paper trail that it went through a bank. And I'm gonna ask them that when she come back. Which will respond include all the information. And I want your video. If possible, I will speak to the mayor of the city of Reed. That's who I wanna talk to.
Are you gonna ask her when she come back?
Yeah. What the, the, what the, this response?
I can't tell you what the response is gonna be.
Well, well, I need the paper trail where I signed the check. See, I've been through this before years.
I know, I realize that, I, I see.
So, so, so my request and, and your response, will it show a paper trail where I signed the check?
I can't say that it will have the, um, the sign check. I see that they provided you a copy of this check. I don't, I don't know, I don't know that they'll be able to provide the backside of this check because it was, this was from...
Well, see, I, I asked for this. I asked for this.
This was, I, I realize what you, I realize what you... Yeah, this was, this was from nineteen ninety-seven. I don't know if they'll be able to provide that for you, I don't. I can't, I can't say that they will be.
They, so, so what is your response? I mean, I mean, I've been through this. That's, that's why I have requested. I requested this three and a half years ago.
And, and I see that you have, I see that you have met with HR, that we will use this information and you will receive a response. I can't tell you what it's gonna be, I haven't read any of, any of the information you provided.
And your response?
I'm sorry?
And, and all that you're doing now?
Uh-huh.
I'm requesting that I can speak to the mayor of the city of Reed.
Okay, I, they'll respond and let you know whether or not you can have an appointment.
No, it's not optional.
Okay.
This is money that I worked for.
Okay.
They have not gave me one dime. Not a dime.
Okay.
You say you gave me a check, but it's no signature, it's no paper trail. With all the resources that the city of Atlanta, even in nineteen ninety-eight had, in four years, they could have went to advocate and investigated and find out what happened to my money. In four years, with all the resources that the city, ninety-eight had, in four years, if, if it was embedded over in advocate, they don't have time. My nephew, I gave him power of attorney to pursue this matter if something ever happened to me. Somebody in my family or me is going to enjoy my pitching money, my money that I worked for. And everybody tell me to be patient. Like, is that way to be? That I don't hear no response from you? I don't believe this, it's gonna be a response. Okay, I talked to Councilman Moore. He said, in four years, why you ain't got a lawyer? I live off a fake income. I don't have twenty-five hundred dollars to give a lawyer for a retainal fee. That's three months of my social security check. I don't have that kind of money. And I shouldn't even have to go through this to get my money. Except, it just sounds a bit...
You know, another thing, he, he, he called me up here, I was up here three weeks ago. I came up here from Atlanta three weeks ago. And we talked to a lady that said she was the secretary of the mayor. And we haven't even seen a courteous, courteous reply from a city government in the state of Georgia and in, in the US.
Do you know who you spoke to?
Yeah, we have a document, we definitely, we document everything.
Do, do you just have the first name?
Did you write it down there or did we get it in that tablet?
I think so. He sent this information on the first page, the lady that received the certified letter. I hope y'all don't have to go through what I'm going through.
You didn't receive the certified letter from the mayor?
On me?
Received the certi, this letter from the mayor? That was me.
Oh, 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 okay. But then you asked me to send another copy?
Right, and I never received another copy.
But see, I mean, what's...
And you, a whole month I didn't get a copy from you, sir.
A whole month, I didn't wait for four years. Every department, I sent you a copy.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go to your voice, please. And, um, and...
You was the one that told me that you received a copy.
On June second, correct.
So I ain't need another copy when you already got it?
The mayor got the copy, the, the original, I didn't make a copy for myself.
May five, may five copies of that. Let me make another, so when I come back.
We, we have, we have the copies. We, we are going to review what you've submitted and you will have a response from our office within the week and a response to your request for meeting with the mayor, okay?
Thank you, governor.
Thank you all very much.
I apologize, I apologize.
It's okay.
You know, but you don't know how frustrated I am, four years, four years.
I understand.
I couldn't even apply for the money in ninety-eight. You have to be fifty-five. Even the lawyer from the pitching board told me, sir, I don't see how they sent you a check in ninety-eight. Even if I had applied in ninety-eight, I would have been denied based on the age requirement. You have to be fifty-five. I was forty-five. I, I simply changed job. I got a better job at the Cal County Sheriff Department and I changed job. That's all I did.
Well, you'll have a response.
Okay, thank you, governor. Excuse me, ma'am.
Thank you for your professionalism, thank you so much. Really do, thank you.
Where can people, you get a check for eight thousand?
Okay, after doing that walk, what do you think? Do you feel any more confident or how do you feel about your situation now?
Well, sir, I'm, 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 I feel confident when they give me my money. Really, for me, I've been through this before. I was excited three years ago when I talked to the commissioner Yancey about my pension. But being excited and not getting no money, so I'm not excited. I'd be excited when they give me my money.
Do you feel like when she said that you'll get a response, you think that'd just be a general response, but you want to get...
It just gonna be a general response. That's why I specified what I want in your response for the paper trail, the signature of the check that I received. Because see, to me, it's just like, here we go again, here we go again.
So being a government entity, you believe that if they actually provided you with the check, that there should be a paper trail somewhere to show that you actually signed for that check and you know for a fact that you did not sign for the check, am I correct?
I never seen it. I, I, I never seen it.
Why do you think it's so hard for, from, from looking at the employees? It seems as if though they, uh, seem a little concerned about whether you actually signed for the check or not.
Well, I can't, I cannot read and say why a person do this.
Right, I notice you're very cautious on that.
I, I can't say why. I don't know why. All I can say is that they sticking together, they sticking together. From the law department, pitching department, the commissioner Yancey department. Everybody is saying that they believe my story. Like, that's the impression that I got from them. That they believe my story. But they investigate and find out what happened to my money. With the resources that the city of Atlanta has, if I had went to Jamaica, Russia, they have the resources to find out where the money was.
And you brought up also, I think you showed some type of documentation that there was something that has been reported in terms of money being misappropriated.
Yes, the SEC, the Superior Exchange Commission Office out of Washington DC allegedly said that, even she said that was in two thousand and thirteen, that, that the pitching director embedded one point two million dollars, see?
For me doing this since nineteen seventy-five in terms of, uh, on social media, it seems to me that there should be somebody or some agencies that can actually account for the tax bills, dollars, as well as other complaints that may have been registered with the city of Atlanta about other people, workers not getting their pension.
Well, if, 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 if the allegedly part was one point two million dollars, there has to be a bunch of them. That's a lot of money.
Well, well, a lot of people probably gave, but why haven't you given up?
Because I'm, I'm not asking for a handout.
Now what?
I'm not asking for a handout.
Okay.
I'm asking for the money that I labeled for, for ten years. No, it's not out, no, no, it's not out, no, it's not out.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. And one closing remark I'd like to get from you. Why did you call to get to prepress to get this in, in the news?
Because I've been going through a revolving door from one department to the other department. Wait three months, no response. Then it start all over. It's been four years. My intention, if the media get involved, if the media get involved, then I get some type of result.
Well, we are going to, I do have, uh, some contact with some people in Washington DC. I doubt they will be able to help, but we will be sending it to some agencies that I've sent other stuff, uh, information and videos to, okay?
Well, well, this step that we doing now, now is more encouraging than anything because I feel like if the media get involved, then they have to respond.
No, they do not.
Well, they will.
But, but, but it, it often works better than not having it. But I have work cases with equipment ten plus two with the newly elected black mayors in sixteen, eighteen cities, voting rights, and even the Democratic chair of the vote quarter won't even address it. The Northern Secretary of State, the Attorney General Sam Odom, they all aware of this, but they sit back and say and do nothing. So we are hoping that under our form of government, that somebody will deal with you because in your situation, you talking about fourteen thousand dollars during these hard economic times. because in your situation, you talking about fourteen thousand dollars during these hard economic times.
This, this, I just started drawing my social security. This money will help me get me a place to stay. I stay with someone, I don't have my own place. You know, you know, the government, you can't live off of eight hundred and forty-four dollars. This money will help me achieve that goal.
Okay, once again, what's your name and a phone number?
James Rutledge. Phone number, six seven eight seven six zero zero seven two five.
Thank you very much, and great possibility, maybe some news made here, news media in Atlanta would care enough about your situation to focus in on it. I'm down in Valdosta, I don't mind putting it out there. But I believe that there should be Atlanta Journal, somebody should address your issues because after all, there may be a lot of other people with the same problems, but they just gave up because nobody would cover their story.
Well, PS, their response. I did get in contact with Claude Howard two years ago.
Okay, okay, okay.
One of his, his, his assistants said that if it's two or three people, that they can't involve just my single issue.
Yes, sir.
But if it's three or four different people having the same problems that I'm having, then it is a problem.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.